Hello Cambridge, welcome to What's That About? Where we answer all your questions about the pressing issues of the day. Brought to you by CCTV, where we want to live like common people, common people like you.
In that case, I'll have a rum and Coca-Cola. As a reminder, as part of our 2025 election preview, we interviewed most of the challenger candidates running for Cambridge City Council with full interviews with chapter links to each question available on our YouTube playlist and CCTV's Vimeo website here.
And we also showed you clips of the candidates' responses to two of the biggest issues in this election: housing and bike lanes.
Okay, Max, but this election is about more than just bike lanes. There's all kinds of other issues too.
Delicious bike lanes. I can't get enough of them. But you're right, Julie, we asked candidates why they're running and also talked to them about everything from supervised injection sites to making the number one bus free to their favorite neighborhoods in Cambridge.
Let's hear a little bit from the candidates first and why they're running.
I've always known that I wanted to contribute. I've always wanted to make a difference. I mean professionally, I just serve people. I want to help people. And doing something like being on the city council, you have the ability to help a large amount of people through policy. Whereas a lot of the work I do professionally is more, I don't want to say reactive, but it's after the fact. So it's, you know, I want to see what I can do to help people before maybe they land in Cambridge City Court or before they are trying to get disability benefits. You know, where can we actually address certain societal problems more at the root? And I think with policy, you can really do that.
I'm running because I really think that Cambridge deserves better in kind of the way that the council has been functioning as of late. And then I feel like they've gotten really disconnected from residents and are more being driven by special interest groups and so have lost a lot of trust with residents. So I'm hoping to be able to bring that back through kind of more accountability, better communication of city kind of plans and more focus on outcomes. So that's really the basis of my platform. And I think that just from talking to constituents across the city is something I've heard over and over again, how they don't feel like the policies that are being implemented are really in their best interests. They're kind of either being driven by developers or advocacy groups. And so we're kind of forgetting about the actual residents and they're the ones feeling the most impact. So hoping to kind of bring some accountability back and really tie that back to what matters most for residents.
My highest priority, my true highest priority in this race is dismantling a system that I think methodically prioritizes the wealthy, the powerful and really the well-connected, the insiders over average people who make the city run. And a lot of people will say, well, that's just politics. But the truth is that, you know, there are honest politicians. And a lot of the politicians in Cambridge have told me, well, that's just politics. But if you ever use that line, to me, you are morally disqualified for being a politician. If you're willing to write off what you know is an opaque system that disadvantages a significant share of the population and that, you know, relies on profiteering by wealthy folks, then you shouldn't be running for office. And most people recognize the system is broken, Avery, from the left to the right. I think that's some of what you've seen in Donald Trump's appeal. But I've got to tell you, since I've started running for office, I've realized that it's far more broken than frankly I even realized. Because candidates need to raise a lot of money, Avery, in order to compete in this race. In order to even for the Cambridge City Council race, a significant amount of money needs to be raised. Candidates will often raise $60,000, $70,000 towards the end of the race. And so they either need to be independently wealthy to go into this or they need to become indebted to someone, to an interest group, to a super PAC, other politicians whose endorsements they want and seek, even unions. And I love unions. And so at the end, we have a system that really rewards favoritism, that rewards cronyism, that rewards profiteering rather than dignity and opportunity of ordinary people here in the city. And we need campaign finance reform, ethics reform. We need term limits and many other changes to the city council that we'll never have time enough to talk about.
But it wasn't until maybe four years ago when I took care of a patient that thirty something year old young guy got admitted for a drug overdose. And when it was time for discharge, I said, my friend, you're ready to go. And he said, I don't know what to do. And I said, what do you mean? He said, other than drugs, I don't know what else to do with life. That was sort of the moment when I felt that, you know what? Beyond the hospital walls, we probably needed a more robust healthcare system. And combining with all the words of wisdom that I got from different mentors and colleagues, I decided that I would like to run for Cambridge City Council on a public health platform to make the city healthier, safer and more united.
So I'm running for Cambridge because I think this is a very unique place and we're living in a very unique time. I think that right now, the country and a lot of places in the world are in a state of chaos and it's very hard to implement positive change in many ways. But here in Cambridge, we actually can, both because we're at the local level, because we have so many resources that so many places just don't have at all. We have one of the highest concentrations of human capital and we have one of the most progressive and open-minded cultures you're ever going to find. And we were the first municipality in the entire US to award a same-sex marriage license. And we're the birthplace of so many world-changing creative ideas, one of the birthplaces of the internet and so many breakthroughs that have really changed lives. So I think that if there is a way to make positive change and if that is going to happen, we have to work from the bottom right now. We have to work at the ground level and I feel that's the local level. And so we have an opportunity here in Cambridge to do things differently and to do things right and to try out policies that are really, really exciting that might never, ever happen in any other place.
So first is, you know, neighborhood voice. I think that the perception and the experience of neighborhoods with the city is that they really have very little input. And when there is an initiative, usually they're the last to know and they get shown a, here's what we're going to do. We'd like your input, but it's already pretty well baked by the time it gets to the neighborhood. And it takes a long time for neighborhoods to actually organize around these things so that they can have an opinion and have a voice. So I think that, you know, for example, zoning or bike lanes. I was just down on Broadway in the last couple of months where the community spoke up and they said, we really need parking. And they put a petition together with a thousand signatures on it. They sent 300 emails in. They had a community meeting. They invited the counselors to where a hundred people got up and spoke about their parking needs. And then they spoke and then there was charter righted and they went back and did it again. And it was completely ignored. They built the bike lanes, they're going to take the parking. And so that's happened time and time again where the city comes in and they do their community meetings under the auspices of input and they don't really do it. And the communities are disadvantaged because, you know, in bike lanes or in zoning, there are well-established lobbies that are very much on message and they can call up their masses and get 600 signatures on a petition very quickly for any purpose where the neighborhoods aren't organized. They're all doing, living their lives, sending people to school, et cetera.
And I was born in Jordan and immigrated with my family to the US when I was young. We moved around a lot, so I didn't really feel a sense of community until I came to Cambridge as a student in 2019. So it was then in which I started to learn and understand the power of community, especially moving forward on progress in terms of issues related to social, social justice, racial justice and economic justice. So I kind of positioned myself today, especially having ran in 2023, in a very interesting time in the US where we're under the Trump administration again. And there are so many fears and anxieties right now around our political landscape. And so one way that folks turn to find that security and that comfort is through our local government. So I want to be able to be someone that folks know can meet the moment and help bring some of the issues to light and build a vision for Cambridge that is centered around dignity and affordability for everyone.
My highest priority would be changing the zoning. So in February, there was some zoning that was passed. It's called the multifamily housing zoning. And I think there was parts of it that were really good. And then there was parts of it that seemed like they were a little rushed. I've talked to some counselors who voted yes, who said there was parts of it that they feel like certain projects show that their buildings are not necessarily what they had intended for, right? So one of the things that they recognize is six stories across the city, that there could be areas where a six-story wouldn't really fit. And we might be seeing some of those projects proposed. So I think there's a lot of people that would like some corrections. There was also parts of it that I liked though. So I want to make sure that we're changing it to keep the best parts of the zoning while changing to adjust.
I'm running because there have been a lot of changes made in this community. In a lot of the communities that I've lived in, I've lived in South Side Chicago, where I felt like, you know, just going every day to work, having a nine to five job was just barely making ends meet. But actually being involved and, you know, my local neighbors getting to know people, figuring out their needs when, you know, knowing what was going on in the system. I was, I lived in South Side Chicago when Black Lives Matter started. I had an opportunity in Chicago to meet Father Michael Flegger, who's really big in Black Lives Matter all across the United States. I've also lived in New York City, in Albany, where I met a lot of great, great congresswomen and administrators in Albany as well. So, you know, I still want to be involved in the community. I want to help people. At the same time though, all that activism that I did during COVID, you know, with Black Lives Matter, I'm currently involved with an organization here right now. It's called the Boston May Day Coalition. And they are an independent organization, but they support initiatives to help people who are in need with immigration reform, with, you know, with just a lot, a lot of migrant situations. As was, of course, I was involved during COVID with an organization called Mass Action Police Vitality. Working for a community is good, but when it comes to a personal level, and right now I'm kind of going through a lot of personal situations too. And so that's why I'm running because it's affecting my community as well as affecting me on a personal level too.
Wow, some of those are really compelling, some.
We also want to share with you some of the interesting ideas and snippets that came from the interviews. Some of the candidates have some really innovative proposals. For example, Aya Alzubi has some progressive ideas that sound similar to the issues New York City mayoral candidate Zorin Mamdami espoused in a successful primary run.
I mentioned really wanting to run on creating a city that is dignified and affordable for everyone. And I centered this around the fact that, you know, no one should have to worry about making rent, for example. No one should have to worry about getting around safely. No one should have to worry about being able to afford food. So I think that as a city, we have to step up to make that vision real. And especially when we're under the Trump administration right now and there are a lot of fears around even just being able to navigate public spaces. And in terms of advocating for what specific policies my campaign is focusing on is, the first and the most important is creating more permanently deeply affordable housing. The second is making the number one bus free. And in light of Daily Table closing, I definitely want to be able to explore if we can create the first city-run grocery store. I've talked to a few residents in terms of what Daily Table meant for them. And I used to shop at Daily Table, so that's also an important one that I want to explore as well.
I found Zion Sharon's call for GeoPay to make it easier for first responders to live in Cambridge pretty interesting too.
My signature kind of platform piece that's, I think, pretty unique to me is GeoPay. So it stands for geographic pay. It's where first responders get paid more to live in the communities they serve. It's something I feel very strongly about. I have, my grandpa Sam was a fire chief in New York City. He has all these stories about living in the communities they serve. They have faster response times, they care more about, you know, serving their neighbors. And firefighters, they're saving lives. So they care just generally that they save lives. But there is, I feel like a special little spark when it's your neighbor. And it's something I'd also like to see potentially for teachers, for education. But I would have to have a conversation with the school committee because I know that they run the school system and I want to make sure that we're being really respectful of those separations.
Of note, Peter Schuh has proposed something similar, looking to prioritize occupations like teachers, nurses, firefighters, social workers, case managers, police and veterans.
And we already covered on a previous episode Dana Bullister's plan for a split rate tax to spur commercial landlords to stop sitting on vacant spaces. But she also has a data-driven plan to make street parking more easily available for short-term parking.
The idea is that in these, in commercial centers where there's always too much traffic, you basically make every single metered spot free for the first 15 minutes. And what that does is it allows businesses to be able to very easily have these very quick pickups and deliveries. It allows someone who needs to pick up their prescription from CVS, for example, to be able to find, first of all, like find something very close to their destination and be able to pick it up without too much trouble. And then beyond that 15-minute limit, the spaces have demand-based pricing. So what that means is that you price each meter spot so that roughly 85% of the parking spots on that block are filled at any given time and roughly 50%, 15% are left empty. And so what that means is that you essentially get rid of circling. You don't have this experience where you go and you can't find a spot. There's always a spot. In fact, there's always going to be, nearly always, there's always going to be a spot on exactly the same block where you want to shop or you want to go, right? It's always going to be there, no circling. And the other, the other outcome of this is that it's actually very, very advantageous for local businesses. So why? So first of all, pickups and deliveries are much, much easier. I mean, every single time I see a car blocking a bike lane, it seems like it's some Amazon truck or some person trying to do a delivery and they're just desperate to do it. They don't need to stay there for long. They're just like, oh, I just need to be there for two minutes. So they lock up half the street. But anyway, so this will eliminate that sort of unsafe type of desperate parking behavior.
She can really make it easier for everyone to park that car and have it yad. We're going to need another saying, chief.
And some of the candidates were not afraid to be outspoken about their policies. Stan Rivkin thinks the council isn't being bold enough in the current political environment, especially in relation to the destruction of our federal government.
When you think about our tax rate, because if we truly believe that the wealthy must pay their fair share, as opponents of Donald Trump typically believe, and that we should take care of our most vulnerable neighbors, as opponents of Donald Trump tend to believe, then I think we need to ask ourselves how we are closing a homeless shelter with 58 beds in June, the Transitional Wellness Center. I think we need to ask ourselves how we are not extending Rise Up, which is a program that benefited 2,000 low-income families, gave them several hundred dollars of cash assistance every month in order to afford things, the class dollars of rent, groceries for their kids, school supplies, right? How do we do all that? How do we have such significant food insecurity in Cambridge? How do we have all that and have the lowest residential property tax in the region? Point seven three for this year. How are we okay with that? And how is that different than cutting taxes for the rich and cutting services for the poor that Donald Trump is advocating in Washington? How are our values different from the Reaganomics principles that he's pushing? We have to remember Boston's property tax rate is 1.16, Watertown 1.17, Newton is near one, Somerville is 1.06 and nationally it's about 1%. So we are significantly, significantly lower. And so whenever I talk about raising property taxes, it's always funny to me when people call it radical. Because it's not radical. What's radical, and we have to acknowledge this, by definition, what is radical and what is radically conservative is Cambridge's fiscal policy. And we don't have to do anything wild or crazy in order to be able to help all the folks that I just talked about. Even if we raised our rate to point nine, which would still be the lowest in the area, we would still be number one lowest, far lower than the national average. We could actually, if we wanted to, very easily support all those families for Rise Up. We could build many times the capacity that we have now for unhoused folks to have a safe place to sleep at night. We could solve all the food insecurity in Cambridge and we can do so, so much more.
Ned Malanson also took the council to task for not funding the Transitional Wellness Center.
Like one of my favorite quotes that I sort of live by is, you know, the future's already here, it's just not evenly distributed or it's not distributed yet. So like in a lot of ways, we already have the solutions to our problems. We just haven't, you know, executed on them. We haven't gotten them out there. And that's kind of like basically the core of my political philosophy. It's not, I don't like to pretend that it's not cheap. You know, I can't say we can solve our homelessness issue, you know, help people who are unhoused and sleeping outside get treatment and roofs over their heads. It's not cheap, it requires resources. But, you know, the opposite of that and not doing that, not investing upfront, it's always going to cost more in the long run. So if we don't make these investments now, if we don't fund things like the Transitional Wellness Center, the Safe Injection Sites, the monthly, you know, medicine treatments to help people deal with their opioids, opioid addiction, we're going to pay for it in other ways with public disorderliness, with, you know, needles on the street, with low-level crime, with deodorant locked up behind plastic at Target, with, you know, Cambridge District Court, people rotating through there, you know, incarcerating them in Middlesex County. So it always comes back. And when you don't invest in your community, the costs are always 10x. So even though it's tough and we have these like, oh, you know, can we fund the TWC at $10 million or whatever it was? Like I understand those are real numbers and there's not infinite money, but sometimes we don't consider the costs that don't appear on the balance sheet.
Yeah, Ned's support for the TWC and Rise Up Cambridge was shared by several candidates like Aya Alzubi and Stan Rivkin. And Peter Schuh, a medical doctor, came out in favor of safe injection sites as one tool of many to deal with the ever-present addiction problems in the city.
The truth is, in life, we're not going to be able to solve every issue. Substance use is a very hot topic. Narcotic overdose, and I don't mean to throw numbers around, but narcotic overdoses kill about more than 700 people in Cambridge every year. That is a huge number. And I'm not trying to minimize bike fatalities or fatalities around traffic and stuff like that. But compared to that, I think we can do a whole lot for substance use in Cambridge. And we should. And I expect myself, with my background, to focus really on this issue a lot. So to answer the question, no matter what we do, there are going to be folks who use substance. And I think, I think for these folks, obviously educational program is very important. Peer support group is also very crucial important, just like AA for folks with alcoholic issues. You know, because we are not able to prevent folks from using substance, all of them. I think having safe injection sites and prevention clinics and addiction medicine sites, I think that those are super important. I favor, I favor that.
He shares his stance with incumbent counselor and social worker Mark McGovern, who we interviewed last year.
Right, along with Ned Malanson, a public defender, and Elizabeth Bizio, a registered nurse. It seems like we should trust the people working on the front lines of addiction and this might be worth trying out. But safe injection sites are still illegal in this state, Governor Healey. Maybe you could do something about that or anything.
Speaking of people with direct knowledge of pressing city issues, candidate La Queen Battle was brave enough to share her own experience living unhoused and trying to find housing in Cambridge.
It was hard. I mean, it was really hard. I'm not going to lie, it was hard. I was back and forth between shelters. I was back and forth between people's houses. I mean, I, my stuff was in storage. I've been in so many different storage facilities. I've slept on so many people's couches, so many people's floors. I'm grateful that I had a friend in Watertown who let me stay with him for a couple of months. I'm grateful for a partner that I had in Boston. He let me stay here for a little bit. He really helped me out. But, you know, so I'm grateful for the people that came into my life at a particular time. But again, it's not an easy road. And I know housing is different for individuals, persons versus homeless persons versus families. When you have homeless families, they have more of an uphill to climb as well as homeless individuals. I'm a homeless individual here in Massachusetts. No car, working in the gig economy. And then on top of that, I'm always carrying around suitcases everywhere I go. You know, always carrying around suitcases everywhere I go, taking them to these day centers, taking them to these shelters. And a lot of these shelters, they want to accept suitcases or you have to put everything in a locker or, you know, you have to sleep on the floor. And a lot of these facilities that I stayed in, they were full. Or they told me they didn't have any beds available and the only option for me was to sleep on the floor. And so I didn't mind, I didn't mind sleeping on the floor. I just pretty much wanted a roof over my head and a place to sleep. And so during those times, I pretty much, I got sick a lot. I ended up in the hospital a couple of times from COVID. And after I got off from COVID, I just went back to the shelters and tried to get it back together, get more stable, get a job and get it back together.
But it wasn't all serious business. In response to a question about what she would do to improve the cultural life of Cambridge, Elizabeth Bizio mentioned the need for more activities for pre-teens.
Again, personally, I would like to see more activities geared towards like later school-age children. And this is purely selfish because I have a 10-year-old that I'm always looking for kind of new activities. And I find there's stuff for like little, little kids and there's stuff for teenagers, but there's not a lot for kind of your older school-age kids. That's a community event and we try to go to as much stuff as we can, but it's mostly like beer gardens, like, or stuff for like, like reading in the park and stuff for like little kids. So I think that like families are kind of a forgotten segment of Cambridge in that like, we do still live here. And kind of when you're raising children, like what are those needs? And so I would, I would like to see more kind of activities and even like cooking classes for elementary school kids. I'm shocked, there's like none. It's driving me bockers. I have, like I said, my stepdad loves to bake and I'm like, there's stuff for adults, but there's, there isn't like, there might be some through the school, but like there's no after-school or weekend program for like learning how to bake.
And John Hanrad, he mentioned his love of walking his dog in fresh pond and his wish for Cambridge to develop a similar shopping and entertainment area to Bo Market in Somerville.
So I think one thing that we really are missing is the open space. You know, where do we have places where community can meet? And parks or, or community centers where people can get together? You know, in my neighborhood, I walk along the sidewalks and I see everybody and you say hello to them and having another place to go. You know, somebody, somebody mentioned that Porter Square, where I live, has a lot of coffee shops. And I said, well, that's the only place we can go meet. So we don't have any parks or anything there. Maybe there's a way to sort of build out an area that's off the corridors, that caters to more specialty shops, right? And somehow get that developed where, you know, you could go and walk over to it. And I think, what's the one over in Union Square, the Bo?
Bo Market.
Bo Market. So that has a lot of little funky little shops in there and it's fun to go in there and walk around. To be able to develop that, that type of environment here would be great.
And I just wanted to end with pointing out that Dana Bullister took the time out of discussing her detailed platform to mention her support for goats.
I'm pro goat.
Come on, Max, her opinion on goat grazing is also pretty thought out.
Maybe, but she did agree with me that government goats would be a good thing, big goats.
It would be pretty cool to have government goats. I mean, wow, just bring them over to Danahue Park, have them help out there. This is building on some of the policies related to urban farming, for example, and allowing people to be able to grow their own food and have their own livestock to, you know, within certain constraints, of course, to preserve public health, et cetera, et cetera. So there are already laws that allow, I believe, poultry farming at a very small scale in Cambridge. I want to build on this by allowing folks who want to, to be able to have goats to graze. I want to build on this by allowing folks who want to to be able to have goats to graze. And this is exciting on many levels. One, it's um very environmentally friendly to have a goat uh cut your grass rather than a mower. Um, and so, yeah, basically, I I want the policy framework to allow that to take place.
Okay, well, again, if you want to see that answer and all the candidates' answers in the context they were actually spoken, remember, go to the YouTube playlist or CCTV's Vimeo website. We also have some older interviews we did with sitting council members pre-campaign available, too. And maybe we'll sneak in some additional incumbent interviews before the election, so watch this space.
This has been another twenty twenty-five election preview. And don't forget to vote, people. Early in mail-in voting starts in October.
Until next week, we'll see you first.